Good evening, Chair. Calls to order public hearings for Bill 25016, Animal Shelter. And our presenters this evening are Ms. Councilwoman Robert and Councilwoman Imhoff. Ms. Robert, whenever you're ready.
Yes. So I wanted to introduce this bill based on the factors that a lot of individuals own cats and dogs and some of them cannot afford to get them spayed or neutered at normal veterinarian clinics. So what this bill does, this bill updates the definition of an animal shelter in the Harford County zoning code to allow nonprofit shelters to provide low-cost spay and neuter services and wellness vaccinations, such as rabies and core vaccines, to animals owned by the public, not just animals abandoned or surrendered to the shelter. The bill keeps the scope narrow, that shelters may only provide spay and neuter surgeries and wellness vaccines to the public, no other veterinary services. Why is the change needed? The current code restricts shelters to caring only for animals already in their custody. This creates barriers for nonprofit shelters that have the ability, expertise, and capacity to offer preventative services that support responsible pet ownership in the community. The affordable preventative services directly reduce unwanted litters, animal abandonment, shelter overcrowding, the number of stray animals in communities, and public health risk related to unvaccinated animals. This bill supports the county's public health and safety goals because it does wellness vaccinations, such as rabies and core disease vaccines, protects not only pets but also farm animals and residents, allowing shelters to offer low-cost vaccines, reduces the spread of preventable diseases, and strengthens community protection. This bill does not allow shelters to operate as a full veterinary clinic. The bill strictly limits what shelters can offer to members of the public: spay-neuter services, wellness vaccinations, no examinations, no diagnostics, no treatment of injury or illness, no full-service veterinary care. This ensures that shelters complement, not compete with, private veterinary practices. How does the bill benefit the community? Allowing shelters to offer affordable preventative care helps. It reduces the number of stray and abandoned animals in neighborhoods, prevents diseases, again like rabies and parvovirus. It reduces the burden on animal control services. It lowers long-term county costs related to shelter intake, promotes responsible pet ownership, and protects livestock and domestic animals from preventable illnesses. The services permitted under this bill occur indoors, within existing shelter operations, and do not change the nature of shelters' footprint, noise profile, or neighborhood compatibility. This amendment authorizes what many shelters are already equipped to do but are currently restricted from offering by zoning language. It's a minor zoning change with major public health and community benefits. The bill advances the county's goal of reducing the number of stray and abandoned animals by providing affordable preventative care. This will help reduce animal abandonment due to cost barriers, the number of unwanted litters entering the shelter system, and public expenditures associated with animal Spay-neuter surgery is the single most effective strategy for reducing overpopulations, and families who cannot afford surgery often end up with unplanned litter, which frequently become owner surrenders, strays, community cats, and shelter intakes. So providing low-cost access prevents these outcomes before they occur. How many shelters will this apply to? This bill applies to all nonprofit animal shelters in Harford County. While the county has few nonprofit shelters, this legislation ensures a consistent, modern standard across the board. This bill does not cost taxpayers anything. This amendment does not create new county spending. Shelters offering low-cost services typically fund them through donations, grants, volunteer veterinarians, and nonprofit partnerships. This bill removes strictly zoning barriers preventing shelters from providing these essential services. This bill can help reduce shelter overcrowding and preventative care, reducing the flow of animals entering the shelters. Every spay-neuter surgery and every vaccination decreases stray population growth, surrender rates, disease outbreaks inside shelters, the need for costly animal control interventions. Finally, this bill amends Code 267-4 of the Harford County Code by expanding the definition of animal shelter to allow nonprofit shelters to, again, provide spay and neuter services to domestic animals owned by the public, provide wellness vaccinations to those same animals, and offer only those additional services and no other veterinary services, ensuring a focused, limited scope. This amendment empowers nonprofit shelters to deliver cost-effective preventative services that benefit residents, protect public health, reduce animal abandonment, and support long-term animal welfare goals in Harford County. And it strengthens the county's capacity to address the overcrowding, stray population issues in a humane, fiscally responsible manner. I will note that when I did research on the numbers nationally with homeowners, it stated that seventy-four percent of ninety-four point seven million owned dogs are spayed, and only seventy-seven percent of ninety-one point eight million own cats are spayed, leaving an estimated twenty-five million pet dogs and twenty-one million pet cats intact and able to breed, with an additional forty-one million stray cats and dogs, and that's nationwide.
Thank you, Ms. Robert. Ms. Imhoff.
I would just like to add that this is, again, what Councilwoman Ms. Roberts was saying, was this is a preventative measure. This prevents us from having litters that the Humane Society or other rescues are going to have to take in in a responsive manner. This also allows different rescues around the area to partner with different agencies and veterinary services, to be able to prevent those rescues from having to transport animals outside of our county, which is an extensive cost to them. So this actually allows us to be able to provide all of these services within our county and gives our rescues and shelters more of an opportunity to actually service the animals that we are responsible for.
Thank you, Ms. Imhoff. Counsel, Mr. Janjordana.
So, thank you for bringing that question. One of the things you said was it's in care only, so if that's, would it be feasible as well just if somebody dropped off something, that they gave them permission, that it was in their care, that they could do the work without having to change the code?
I think they have to surrender the animals to this.
Right now, the only, this doesn't change the services, this changes the type of animal that they can provide the services to.
Right. But what she said was it's got to be in their care.
Well, so it's no diff, so right now, it's only the animals that have been abandoned or brought to the shelter by Harford County Animal Control. Those are the only animals that they can provide this kind of care to. Now, I, as a citizen, would be able to bring my pet to them to have these services provided.
Okay, so my only question is, if I, as a citizen, bring my pet, can't they sign something that says that pet is now in my care and they can do the work?
No, no, no. Because the current definition says abandoned and left there temporarily or permanently or brought by animal control.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to hear.
That's why I just wanted to be exclusive. I'm sorry.
You are loud.
It's for the recording, so that's why.
I'm sure they could hear, but.
This was, no, it's right there. That's what this was, to clean that up and tighten that up, so there was no question that it was an expanded services to pets owned by the public.
And how many nonprofit shelters do we have in Harford County? Is it just the one?
It's just the one.
Just the one. And where are they going? Where are people going now? Are they able to go to Baltimore County or?
There are other counties right now that currently offer those services at a reduced rate in the other Humane Societies.
Pennsylvania, too.
Pennsylvania as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordana. Thank you, Ms. Alledsie, for the clarification. Mr. Bennett.
I just want to thank both our council members on the end over there for bringing this forward. I know it's something that we've had many conversations over the past year-plus about how do we help support our animal community here in Harford County, and I just think this is a wonderful step in doing that work. And if it's all right with them, I would love to be added as a co-sponsor for this because I fully support it.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Sodles.
Thank you. Thank you for introducing this, and I would also like to be added as a sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Anything else from the desk? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There is one, Mr. President, Amanda Hickman.
If you could, the microphone in the back.
Can you hear me all right?
Ken, can I have your name and address, please?
Absolutely. Amanda Hickman, 322 Connolly Road, Rising Sun, Maryland. I am the executive director for the Humane Society of Harford County, so I would like to echo everything that Councilwoman Robert has said. That was a fantastic explanation of the goal behind this change. And thank you. Thank you all for including us in this conversation and for your willingness to support this change. And again, for recognizing the importance of having this available to our general community. As the county's only fully open-admission shelter, we see firsthand the effects and the impact of limited access to affordable care. We receive the calls from folks looking for affordable spay and neuter services, as well as the litters that are simply dumped off at our door or surrendered to animal control. So we recognize the importance of this. That's why our focus is on prevention. We know that this is what we need to do to be proactive. Expanding access to affordable spay and neuter options offers a long-term solution. It allows us and any future shelter within the county to take a proactive approach and address the root cause of animal overpopulation. I do want to note, because this is very specific to us currently, we will not be able to open this up to the general public immediately if this change were to take effect. We do need to obtain grant funding. The Maryland spay and neuter program is what we are interested in pursuing. Of course, we cannot do that yet until this zoning is further clarified. But again, our intent is not to be competition for anyone. We are here to support the community that includes our veterinary community and to complement what they are already providing. I will mention one other thing because it was brought up earlier. There are other shelters in the state, in the region, that do offer affordable spay and neuter, but they are very limited in who they can offer that to. Baltimore Humane and the Maryland SPCA, while they do have this, they are limited to certain zip codes that they are even able to offer this to. So you have to be a resident for that, and I don't know that anyone from Harford County currently would be eligible for that. So again, we are just trying to close that gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hickman. Any other speakers?
There is no one else, Mr. President.
Thank you. With no other speakers, this will conclude this public hearing on Bill 25016. It will be considered at our next meeting. Now we'll open up the public hearing for Bill 25017, Finance and Taxation. Mr. Salas. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. And, Council President, if I may also kind of combine my remarks with the resolution that follows after, and I think they're companion pieces.
We have to close that and open a new hearing. So just make sure you do that before.
Well, just individual.
Just for my comments, I mean.
Yeah.
So there's no spoiler alert, like I'm waiting to get to the redemption part. So County Treasurer Robbie Salas, on behalf of the county executive, bringing forth requests for legislation and a companion resolution dealing with the tax sale. So just a quick kind of synopsis of what the tax sale is. It's ultimately how we deal with delinquent property tax accounts. So property taxes are billed on July 1, and they normally have to be paid either in full or in part by September 30, with the remainder by December 31. And if they are not, then they enter into kind of a delinquent stage, in which case eventually, currently in June, those outstanding taxes, tax liens, would be sold to potential investors that would, in essence, pay those taxes on the homeowner's behalf in exchange for ultimately receiving some interest, some interest payments on that. And then ultimately, if that doesn't, if they're not redeemed in a, more or less in a timely manner after that, there is a process whereby they could go through the courts and eventually take ownership of the property for the foreclosure process. Now, throughout the state of Maryland, you know, there's been some concerns about some of the excesses of the tax sale process, or that it wasn't fair. I should say that in Harford County, we've never really had those issues. We have almost a hundred thousand property tax accounts, and we are generally, by the time we go to tax sale, only taking, you know, three hundred, three hundred and fifty, four hundred to the process. And that's because we do work closely with our taxpayers. We are able to offer payment plans for primary owners who go through housing counseling. We're generally able to do a lot of outreach for individuals, so we don't have the same level of issues that I think that other jurisdictions in the state have. However, when the state passes laws, and that's what largely this legislation is, is it's making it comply with a lot of the state law changes. So one of the big changes is that redemption rate, which I said before, when an investor purchases a tax lien, currently they are receiving twelve percent interest. The state is going to cap that at ten percent. So we have legislation that sets it at twelve percent. We would have to change our legislation, or that'd be the following resolution, to make it at the ten percent rate. Another change is on advertising. The state requires that there be four ads in the local paper. We currently have six ads in the local paper. We run two ads that are kind of preliminary ads, followed by four more longer, more detailed ads that also include the towns. So we would like to change that requirement to adhere to the state's requirement of four ads instead of six. And what we are going to do with those savings, because we do have to pay for those ads in the local paper, is we're going to use that to send out certified letters to the property owners, because not everybody reads the paper. Certainly, this information is still going to be in the paper. I know people are aware of it, but not everyone is. And we feel like this will be a better way to kind of combine that state requirement of four ads in the paper, but also doing additional outreach through certified mailing. One part that's not in this legislation in front of you, but I did want to bring to your attention, and it is in the state law, is that currently the state allows the tax collector to waive from the tax sale any sale that's two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars or lower. The new state law says that if it's homeowner occupied, that threshold needs to be a thousand dollars, so that if you were five hundred dollars behind on your taxes or what have you, you know, we wouldn't sell you a tax sale. We would still advertise, we would still send you letters, let you know that you're behind, and that money would carry on to a future tax year and would eventually probably reach that thousand-dollar threshold. But I think there was a lot of concern statewide about, you know, people losing their homes or going through a lot of stuff because they had twenty-five dollars outstanding or what have you. So this level does change that. So it now creates a thousand dollars for homeowner occupied. And then finally, there is one part of the legislation, it's not so much related to the state process, but is a change that we're asking for for operational purposes. And that is that currently the tax sale is set in law as on the third Monday of the month. And this was originally put into law back when the budget needed, the budget and the corresponding property tax rate needed to be passed by June 1. Now, several years ago, we moved that deadline from June 1 to June 15. Another thing that's also happened is that in the past several years, Juneteenth has become a county holiday, so the county offices are closed. And so that's also right around the third Monday of the month. So by moving the state to the first Wednesday of the month, it kind of eliminates a crunch that we have right now in the Treasury office. Treasury, about ten years ago, had forty-eight people, and now we're down to forty-two people. We've taken on a lot of responsibilities that we didn't have back then, ranging from collecting recordation tax to the senior veterans' tax credits to grants. And it really has just kind of created a time crunch in that end of the year, where we are trying to get those property tax bills out. You know, we have had, we rely very closely with the towns, we rely very closely with the state of Maryland, State Department of Assessments and Taxation, and we just don't necessarily have the bandwidth to try to run that process of getting the upcoming property tax bills out at the same time that we're trying to do the tax sale. So by moving this up to the first Wednesday of the month, it kind of evens out that workflow a little bit for us. And that concludes my remarks on the tax sale legislation.
Okay. Counsel, Mr. Janjordana.
Hey, Robbie, good evening. How many properties do you get that go into the tax, that somebody's paying their tax bill until and they get reimbursed?
So, like, if you were to look at, say, last year, like, the first time, we have about a hundred thousand accounts. So when we first ran that first long ad, the detailed ad, last year, we had about eleven hundred, eleven eighty-nine, you know, the year before, ten forty-four, of people that, I guess, waited to a month before to pay their taxes. By the time we actually went to the tax sale, we, last year, it was three hundred and forty-six properties that went to sale. We were able to sell three hundred and thirty-three of them. So not everybody bids on every, not everybody bids on every property. And if nobody bids on it, then it just more or less kind of lays fallow.
So three hundred and thirty-three properties got sold last year in the tax sale?
Yeah, their tax liens were sold. So, and it's always good to note that we are not selling the properties. Sometimes people will see these, yeah, they'll see these infomercials at night, and people will come looking for the keys. We don't have the keys.
So is that when they get, so if they, if they're sold that property, that's, and they pay the tax bills, that's when they collect the twelve percent or ten percent?
So at that point, it starts collecting. They would start being eligible for, you know, currently twelve percent and then ten percent. So let's just say you have a thousand dollar, you know, I'm late on my taxes, and it's a thousand dollars. You pay my taxes, you know, you bid on it, the county gets the thousand dollars. Now, that bill is up to date, and then you will be the beneficiary of however long it takes me to pay back at that twelve percent, now ten percent, ten percent interest. You can also charge legal fees and the like. So normally, the kinds of individuals who do purchase these tax liens are looking, you know, for an investment to kind of make it off that interest and off of those legal fees, as opposed to, now, there are properties that do change hands, but primarily, the individuals that do this are fairly sophisticated and used to it, and they're looking to make that interest payment. And that's why you do have to have the interest payment at a high enough level that it does entice individuals to bid for these properties.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordana. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
I was, hello, I was looking at the fiscal impact note, and I noticed that with the cap being lowered to ten percent, it will reduce the interest revenue each year by about eight and a half thousand dollars.
So that would be the revenue that would really be going to the beneficiaries, not necessarily the county. So the county wouldn't have the impact. The only place where the county would have the impact would be if the rate was so low that investors didn't want to participate in this process. So this ultimately reduces the rate of return for those investors, not so much for the county.
Yeah, so it doesn't really have any impact, other than we want to make sure that all the tax sales are done so that we have the full revenue from property taxes.
In a, yes, in a perfect world, if we took three hundred and forty-six to sale, you would sell them all. But there's always some properties that, you know, don't have a lot of inherent value or they're underwater because they haven't been, a lot of years have accumulated, nobody wants to bid on it, so.
And I guess, to try and understand why the state put a cap, just let me know if my reasoning is right. If the cap's too low, it's not a good investment because you're not getting a lot of interest. But if the interest rate was too high, well, then you're probably not getting payments either.
Yeah, and it's, it is, this process is probably best described as a necessary evil. You know, we, property taxes do need to be paid, and there needs to be a mechanism for doing that. But there is legitimate concerns out there that, you know, some citizens may not, you know, fully comprehend what's going on, or that some of these interest rates may be too excessively high. So how do you balance that? And it's probably no different than any other types of balances on interest payments. And, you know, when I talk around the state, I think that that ten, the ten percent should not be a problem, you know, statewide. But each year, you know, the state of Maryland does oftentimes add more and more regulations, and so, you know, there will come a point where it might dissuade some investors from participating.
Thank you.
And then, Robbie, we're going to go from six weeks to four weeks in advertising?
Well, just on the ads, yes. You know, so the ads, but as I said before, we will, before all that process, now we'll send out a certified letter to those homeowners, so they would be able to see it. And four weeks is in line with what the state requirement is. So this was a case where our, we were doing a little bit more than that. And those first two ads are pretty limited. They don't have a whole lot of information. They don't include the towns, because we also do the tax sale on behalf of the towns. So those first two ads were always, I don't want to say of no value, but of limited value compared to the more detailed ads. And what we will do is we'll continue with those four very detailed ads.
And is the savings that significant?
I mean, the savings would be, I think it's a, so we spent about twenty-four thousand dollars on the six ads, you know, so it's a few thousand dollars.
Okay.
You know, it's like with anything, there's lots of places where the state does require us to do ads, and that would be one of them.
Gotcha. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
All right, so Robbie, this will conclude the public hearing for 25017, and we'll move on to your resolutions.
So, yes, and so as we spoke about during the resolution, is what is just setting that redemption interest rate, which goes from the current rate of twelve percent to the state cap of ten percent.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that? Anyone signed up?
There was no one signed up, Mr. President.
All right, Robbie, so this will conclude the public hearing on the Resolution 04025, and also.
Double per diem.
Right. We will also take it up at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 041025, Economic Development Opportunity Fund, One Twenty-Six RPM Tech LLC. Raj, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Council President. Members of the County Council, Kim Sparra, the financial specialist at the county's Department of Economic Development, as well as myself, deputy director at the county's Department of Economic Development, are very pleased to speak about the pending legislation before the council, which will authorize a loan for two hundred thousand dollars through the Economic Development Opportunity Fund to a local Harford County business known by, known as Rapid Prototyping and Manufacturing Technologies, RPM Tech for short. As set forth in the legislation, RPM Tech has been operating in Harford County for the last twenty years at 12 East Jarrettville Road in Forest Hill. They provide excellent engineering, design, and prototyping services for a number of businesses in a variety of different sectors, including aerospace, defense, medical, and consumer products, to name a few. Because RPM Tech needs more office and laboratory space, they are in the process of converting an existing barn that is located on the property for the purposes of housing this additional office and laboratory space. The two hundred thousand dollar loan, along with other sources of funding, will be used to cover the cost of this renovation. The terms of the loan would be, again, two hundred thousand for a ten-year term, certain period, for a three percent interest rate. The application has been vetted and approved by the Finance Committee under the Economic Development Advisory Board. I am pleased, and will take a point of privilege, to just point out that in the audience today, I do have Cyrus Etamad Mogadon, who is the founder and president of RPM Tech, well, along with Tara Woodfin, who is the Director of Finance and Operations for RPM Tech. And I'm also pleased to have Gil Kennedy, who is the president and CEO of Harco Credit Union, who also is the chair of the Finance Subcommittee that vetted and approved the application. So we thank RPM Tech for their many years of service and making Harford County home, as well as Gil and the committee that do a fabulous job, and we appreciate their service to the county. It makes a big impact to the business community. So with all that being said, to members of the council, because this loan will create new jobs, it will increase top-line revenue for RPM Tech, and should enhance the value of the real estate in which the renovations will occur, we urge your support in favor of the legislation and approve the loan for the two hundred thousand dollars.
Kim, anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm good for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Well, Raj, we appreciate your presentation here this evening, and we appreciate your investment in Harford County. You mentioned that it is going to create new jobs. I mean, I understand you're going to create a larger footprint, but do we know how many jobs, how many new jobs it will create?
Yes, they, in the application and the conversations with RPM Tech, we're suggesting somewhere between six to ten new jobs over the next two years, and these will be fairly high-paying jobs.
That's what I was going to ask next, so, okay. Thank you.
Very highly technical. It's, I urge members of the council, if you have not been to RPM Tech, that's a worthwhile business to visit.
Well, maybe they can set up a visit for us to come sometime. Mr. Janjordana?
Just trying to look to see where he's at, actually, because it sounds familiar, but said, I think, ten years? Is that how long he's been in business for, ten?
Twenty.
Oh, twenty, okay. So was that the original, his original location? No? Okay.
In the papers.
In the basement. What used to be at that location, sir, do you remember?
Penfield.
Penfield, okay. That's what I, all right, sounds good. Thank you.
So you're right behind the firehouse then. Okay. When we get done, and we take a little bit of recess, there's something going on with this feedback on his mics. Yeah. Anyone else? Maybe I'm just loud. Do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
All right, well, thank you. When no one signed up, we'll conclude this public hearing and look forward to seeing you again next week. Okay, thank you. We're going to take a short recess. Come back at seven-thirty. Chair calls the order legislative session day twenty-five dash zero thirty. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilwoman Imhoff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we gather this evening with thankful hearts, asking for your wisdom as we carry out our work for our community. Help us to listen, to collaborate, and to lead with compassion. May our choices tonight reflect the care for every family in every neighborhood we serve. As we enter this holiday season, we ask for your blessing. May this be a time of peace, gratitude, and renewed connection with one another. Watch our families who gather, the individuals who serve, and those who may be facing hardship or loneliness. Let kindness, generosity, and the understanding of our actions guide us, both inside and outside of this chamber. Bless our county, our leaders, our first responders, and those who work each day to make this safe, a safe, thriving, and welcoming place to live. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Agenda item number four, Presentation of Proclamations. We have none. Council will now be acting as the zoning board of appeals, and will resume a regular legislative session thereafter. Five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Zoning Board of Appeals, zoning board of appeals, case number sixty-thirty-two, MW One Properties LLC may have a motion, please.
Council President, I move to affirm the zoning hearing examiner's decision.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Imhoff, was that you? Thank you. It's been moved a second to uphold the zoning hearing examiner's decision. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six in the affirmative, affirmative, one absent, the motion to affirm the hearing examiner's, hearing examiner's decision is approved. Council, we're now acting in its capacity as the county council. Council appointment, Council Vice President may have a motion, please.
Council President, I move to appoint, approve the appointment of Tony Jan Giordano as Council Vice President.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robert. It's been moved a second to approve Mr. Jan Giordano as Council Vice President. Is there any discussion? Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you for saying my name correctly.
I got it once.
Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Mako representative and alternate may have a motion to approve Councilman Riley and Council, as the representative and Councilwoman Imhoff as the alternate.
Council President, I move to approve Councilman Riley as the Mako representative and Councilwoman Imhoff as the Mako alternative.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. It's been moved a second to approve Mr. Riley, Ms. Imhoff. Is there any discussion? Ms. Imhoff?
I was appointed as the alternate for the Mako representative last May or June. And while my time with them has been very short, I have enjoyed my time, and I do see a great benefit to the community for having multiple representatives at the Mako.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a Mako session coming up, so look forward to that. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Hartford Living Treasurer, Mr. Jan Giordano?
Council President, I move to approve Sheldon Ba, Barr as a Hartford Living Treasurer.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robert. It's been moved a second to approve Mr. Bear as a Hartford Living Treasurer. Is there any discussion? Mr. Jan Giordano?
Council President, I do not know Mr. Barr, but I understand there's going to be, his presentation is going to be this weekend, on Saturday. I will not be around, but I think Councilwoman Robert will be there for me. So I, I certainly do appreciate that, and it's certainly an honor for him, and...
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Executive appointments, Mr. Bennett?
Mr. President, I move to approve the nomination of Alex Lenovit, Lenovitz to the Citizens Nursing Home Board of Directors.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. G, Tony G. It's been moved a second to approve Mr. Lenovitz as the Nursing Home Board of Directors, or member of the Board of Directors. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I just want to thank him for joining the Board of Directors. His experience as a CPA and his personal connection to the facility, I think, are both going to be such a great addition to the board.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Mr. Lenovitz in the audience? Okay. Economic Development Advisory Board, Mr. Jan Giordano?
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Aaron Rabbinowitz as the Economic Development Advisory Board.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. It's been moved a second to approve the appointment of Mr. Rabbinowitz. Is there any discussion? Mr. Jan Giordano?
So I know Aaron is, is the new CEO of Upper Chesapeake. He's also a resident of Hartford County. He's been here for quite some time, so I'm looking forward to him joining the, the board and his input. So, welcome, assuming he gets voted in.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Agenda number six, Special Presentations. We have none. Seven, Approval of Minutes, Zoning Board of Appeals, case number sixty-thirty-two, MW One Properties LLC, November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Public Hearing, November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Legislative Day twenty-five zero twenty-nine, November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions. Resolution zero thirty-five twenty-five, Enterprise Zone, One Mercedes Drive. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution zero three five dash two five.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's been moved a second to approve Resolution zero thirty-five twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I just think it's good to share, to remind the general public that as we vote on these enterprise zone applications, it's really about whether or not they qualify, not whether any of us personally agree or disagree with the existence of enterprise zones. And like I spoke to last week, and will continue to speak to, I do hope that the administration will take time over the spring to sharpen and focus enterprise zone onto areas that need redevelopment versus areas where we're building on new ground.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Resolution zero thirty-five twenty-five is hereby approved. Resolution zero thirty-six twenty-five, Enterprise Zone thirteen oh one, Governor Court may have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution zero three six dash two five.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's been moved a second to approve Resolution zero thirty-six twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Resolution zero thirty-six twenty-five is hereby approved. Resolution zero thirty-seven twenty-five, Enterprise Zone sixteen twenty-one, Clark Road, may I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution zero three seven dash two five.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's been moved a second to approve zero thirty-seven twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Resolution zero thirty-seven twenty-five is hereby approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Resolution zero four two twenty-five and zero forty-three twenty-five into the record for introduction.
Resolution zero four two dash twenty-five, Notice of Sale Refunding Bonds Series B Resolution, twenty twenty-six, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the County Executive. A resolution to authorize issuance and sale, sale and delivery by Hartford County, Maryland, the county of its bond designated Hartford County, Maryland, refunding bonds series twenty twenty-six B, the refunding bonds in the original aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty-nine million pursuant to the provisions of section nineteen dash two oh seven of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, two thousand and thirteen, replacement volume twenty twenty-four supplement, the Refunding Bonds Act, section five twenty-four of the Charter of Hartford County, sections one twenty-three dash forty and two fifty-six dash twenty-six of the Hartford County, of Hartford County, the County Code, and bill twenty-one dash year twenty-one enacted on November second, two thousand and twenty-one, effective January third, two thousand and twenty-two, the refunding bill for the purpose of financing the refunding of certain maturities of the county outstanding Hartford County, Maryland, consolidated public improvement bonds series twenty fifteen A issued by the county pursuant to bills number fourteen dash twenty-four, fifteen dash eighteen, sixteen dash nineteen, seventeen dash ten, all, all as amended, eighteen dash zero zero nine, nineteen dash zero fourteen, and twenty dash zero fourteen as amended, the outstanding two thousand and fifteen A bonds and refunding of certain maturities of the counties outstanding Hartford County, Maryland, refunding bonds series twenty fifteen B issued by the county pursuant to bills number fourteen dash twenty-four, fifteen dash eighteen, sixteen dash nineteen, seventeen dash ten, as, all as amended, eighteen dash zero zero nine, nineteen dash fourteen, and twenty dash fourteen as amended, the outstanding two thousand and fifteen B bonds, and together with the outstanding two thousand and fifteen A bonds, the outstanding bonds, and including accrued interest and cost of issuance, providing for an increase or decrease in the aggregate principal amount of the refunding bonds not to exceed forty-nine million, confirming that the principal premium, if any, and interest thereon shall be general obligations of the county, secured by its full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power, determining that the refunding bonds shall be sold by competitive bid, appointing a bond register, and paying agent for the refunding bonds, approving the substantially final forms for various documents to be executed on behalf of the county in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of the refunding bonds, including an escrow deposit agreement if necessary, determine the date and sale, determining various other matters in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of the refunding bonds, including but not limited to provisions in a notice of sale for changes in the aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds to be sold, and changes in the principal amount to mature in certain years. Resolution zero four three dash twenty-five, Notice of Sale CPI Series A Resolution, twenty twenty-six, as introduced, introduced by the Council President Vincenti at the request of the County Executive. A resolution to authorize the issuance, sale, and delivery by Hartford County, Maryland, the county of its bonds designated Hartford County, Maryland, consolidated, consolidated public improvement bonds, series twenty twenty-six A, the CPI bonds, and the original aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred and ten million pursuant to the provisions of section nineteen dash zero one of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, two thousand and thirteen, replacement volume in twenty twenty-four supplement, the Consolidated Bonds Act, section five twenty-four of the Charter of Hartford County, the Charter, and sections one twenty-three dash forty and two fifty-six dash twenty-six of the Code of Hartford County, the County Code, confirming that the principal premium, if any, and interest thereon shall be general obligations of the county, secured by its full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power, determining that the CPI bonds shall be sold by competitive bid, appointing a bond register and paying agent for the CPI bonds, approving the substantially final forms of various documents to be executed on behalf of the county in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of the CPI bonds, determining the date of the sale, determining the average probable useful life of the improvements or undertakings with respect to which indeptness evidenced by the CPI bonds is to be incurred, determining various other matters in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of the CPI bonds, including but not limited to provisions in a notice of sale for changes in the aggregate principal amount of CPI bonds to be sold, and changes in the principal amount to mature in certain years, and determining that the CPA bonds shall be consolidated for the purposes of sale.
At this time, council will have Mr. Sanless and Mr. Sennett from Miles and Stockbridge come forward. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'll let bond counsel kind of walk through kind of the legalities of the legislation, and I'll just talk a little bit about the process.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and County Council. My name is Chris Sennett, and I'm here again on behalf of the county as bond counsel. I'm a council member at Miles and Stockbridge. To discuss the two resolutions this evening, resolutions number forty-two dash twenty-five and forty-three dash twenty-five, authorizing the sale of Hartford County's twenty twenty-six CPI and refunding bonds respectively. I will begin my discussion with resolution forty-three dash twenty-five, which is the CPI bond resolution. On June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, this county council approved bill number twenty-five dash seven, authorizing and empowering the county to issue its twenty twenty-six CPI bonds for county projects. Please note, this year, there was no separate bill for new water and sewer infrastructure projects for twenty twenty-six. The, the bill authorized bill twenty-five dash seven, authorized the council to adopt one or more resolutions to sell its twenty twenty-six consolidated public improvement bonds upon public sale at a later date. The resolution, though you're looking at tonight, authorized the sale of up to one hundred and ten million of CPI bonds, and the resolution provides notice that the public sale will occur next year on February third, two thousand and twenty-six. All bids will be received by the county treasurer on that date, in coordination with the county's financial advisor, Davenport and Company. The notice of sale is attached to the resolution as exhibit B. And the resolution also authorizes this notice of sale to be published in the Hartford County Aegis, provides the flexibility to the county and the county council to sell fewer than one hundred and ten million dollars of CPI bonds upon the advice of Davenport. The resolution outlines the installments and maturities of the bonds expected to be sold on February third. In addition, it also sets forth the terms for redemption of the bonds, that is, payoff of the bonds, including the form, it also includes the forms of bonds that are to be sold as exhibit C, if you want to take a look at that. The resolution also provides the repayment sources for the bonds and the Internal Revenue Code provisions that are applicable to the bonds in order to maintain their tax-exempt status. This is also outlined in a tax certificate that is executed by the county as of closing. Once the CPI bonds are sold, the resolution authorizes the county to apply the funds of the bonds to specific projects listed in exhibit D, which Robbie will talk about later. It also provides that the county shall use the Depository Trust Company, DTC, as the clearinghouse for the bonds, and Manufacturers and Traders Trust Company as the paying agent. Finally, the county council authorized the county executive and other officials of the county, like the treasurer, to sign the appropriate bond documents in order to effectuate the bond sale and close on the deal. And that's all I have for forty-two, or forty-three dash twenty-five. I'll move on to forty-two dash twenty-five regarding the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six refunding bonds of the county, excuse me. On November twenty-first, the, the council of twenty twenty-one, the county council adopted bill number twenty-one dash twenty-one, authorizing the county to issue up to one hundred and seventy million in refunding bonds. The bill authorized the county council to adopt a resolution at a later date, giving the county the authority to refund its outstanding twenty fifteen A bonds and twenty fifteen B bonds. This resolution, forty-two dash twenty-five, authorized the county to sell up to forty-nine million in refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding the twenty fifteen As, the twenty fifteen Bs. You will recall that we adopted a similar resolution, notice of sale resolution, last year to refund these two series of bonds, but ultimately, count, the county's financial advisor, Davenport, advised that there was no, there was no financial benefit to the county to refund the bonds, so we didn't end up selling refunding bonds last year. There may be a financial benefit this year... There may be a financial benefit this year, depending on the market in February, and Robbie will talk more about that. This resolution also sets forth the terms of the bonds, includes the Notice of Sale, the forms of the bonds, and again, the Internal Revenue Code provisions, ensuring that the interest on the bonds remains exempt from federal income taxation. Given that these are refunding bonds, and as we did last year, the resolution gives the county the flexibility to issue less than forty nine million or no, no bonds at all, if the County Treasurer and Davenport advised that savings will only be achieved by refunding certain series or none. In addition, the resolution authorizes an escrow deposit agreement and a forward purchase contract to facilitate the maximum savings for the county on the refunding. As with the prior resolution, the County Council grants the County Executive, the County Treasurer, and other county officials the authority to execute documentation related to the refunding bonds to effectuate the sale and closing. Finally, after the February third sale, we will again approach the Council with additional resolutions, setting forth the exact terms of the bonds, including appropriate denominations, interest rates, and maturity years for both series. I'm happy to discuss any questions the Council may have, the legal authority for this bill. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Robbie.
Thank you, Chris.
Just talk a little bit about the process, and this is a process that really begins during, during the budget process. So when we were putting together the capital budget, you'll see that there are some projects, long-term assets that the county holds, you know, capital assets that generally have a life expectancy of twenty years or more, that we assign bonds as the funding source to. And ultimately, these bonds will be paid by future taxpayers, and that's one of the reasons why we have the, the, the bond authorization debt, because that's what we're doing. We're committing future taxpayers to pay for these, these benefits, but these are going to be benefits that are going to be there for those future taxpayers as well. So we put bonds as the source of funding for these projects, but we don't necessarily sell the project, the, the bonds until we've, until we actually need to. Now, fortunately, we are in a good enough state as a, as a county that we don't have to sell the bonds ahead of time in order to have the necessary cash flow, so we're able to reimburse ourselves, and that keeps us out of...
I think it's, I think it's our sound guy.
And I'll come here?
The second job.
It's such fascinating conversation, Mike. So, we are fortunate that we are able to reimburse ourselves, and that keeps us away from any arbitrage issues or the like, because there's a lot of rules governing tax exempt bonds because they are tax exempt. And that, so the federal government takes a keen interest, they want to make sure that you are actually using these for schools and for roads and not to just, you know, build up our portfolio. So again, we, when, once we, we made budget for, for projects, but oftentimes, it takes several years for a project to get underway, and then that takes us to where we are actually having the bond sale itself. And so a lot of these projects that make up this one hundred and ten million dollars, these are projects that were budgeted in years, in years past, and the projects are, are well underway. So we asked for this terms of sale resolution, engage in all of the advertising, work with the credit rating agencies in the month of January to get to, to rate the county. We have been a triple A now for about more than ten years. We hope to maintain that triple A status, and then we will sell the bonds again on February, February third, and that will again come before Council to approve, to approve that sale. So just a little bit about what makes up this sale, this one hundred and ten million dollars. Ninety one million is from taxpayer supported, what we call CPI, CPI debt. More than half of that is for schools, ten mil, at forty eight million, ten million for the community college, thirteen million for public safety, five million for roads and bridges, six million for stormwater needs, stormwater watershed management, five million for parks, and then four million for just kind of various county, county facilities, roofs, and parking and things like that. And then nineteen million is for water and sewer projects. Now, Bond Council noted that this last bond authorization from the two thousand twenty six budget did not include any new water and sewer debt, but again, this is from older budgets, so from twenty five, twenty four, twenty three, and that, that totals nineteen million. So just some of the, kind of the highlights of some of the projects that we are talking about. Biggest one is Homestead Wakefield, which recently opened. That's fifteen point four million dollars there. Hartford Tech is eleven million, Chesapeake Welcome Center at the Community College is ten million, Aberdeen School HVAC, nine point five, just to kind of demonstrate just how expensive these HVAC projects are. And then I'm not going to continue on down the line, but, but, you know, they, they, they keep on getting smaller and all from that. But again, they all make up one hundred and ten million dollars. Then on to the refunding, so we just want to be prepared to possibly do the refunding. Interest rates have been a little, a little quirky, you know, for the past several years as we've kind of come out of those really low interest rates that we had during the COVID years. They have come back down a little bit, but we're not sure if they're going to be at a level low enough in order to do these refundings. These refundings are from two thousand fifteen, and they're two parts. It was the, the new money that we sold in two thousand fifteen, that was my first bond sale as Treasurer, as well as a refunding we did of two thousand nine projects, was also my first refunding. And so that totals about forty five million dollars. And just to kind of give you a little bit of taste of what, you know, some of those projects were, you know, back in, in, in two thousand fifteen, we're talking about the H-Man Internet Service, Jarrettsville Elementary, Foston High School, the new Allied Health Building at the Community College, you know, Whiteford Library Expansion, and then if you were to go back to two thousand nine, you know, then you were talking about the Edgewood High School replacement, the Bel Air High School replacement. Those were some of the big projects that are still left from those years. So again, we don't know if we are going to be able to do this refunding, but it's, if we're not prepared to do it, then we can't pull the trigger. So we'll see if we have a rate that's low enough, and if so, we'll, you know, go forward and maybe save the county a little bit of money, but if not, we'll just, you know, continue with our, our current bonds as is.
So Robbie, do you remember in our last process when we were successful in selling some refunding bonds, what the savings was?
I have to go back and, 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 because each one was a little bit different, but generally several millions of dollars, and we have refunded most of the, of the debt that, that we can. This, this debt now, again, these rates were still really good, so some of the higher rates we've already since refunded. Back during the first Trump tax, tax cuts in two thousand eighteen or so, they prohibited us from, from issuing tax exempt refunding. So now you have to wait until a bond is callable, ten years, until you can do, until you can do a refunding with tax exempt dollars. You could do a refunding with taxable dollars, but then you're going to pay a higher rate.
Right.
Because the reason is, is that individuals will accept a lower interest rate because it's, it's tax free. One of the good things with the, the big beautiful bill that just passed is that it did maintain tax exempt status, which is a huge plus for, for all of us issuances, issuers around the country that are building schools and building roads and the like. And so that's definitely a bipartisan effort that we were glad to see, you know, continues to, to get support in Washington.
Thank you, Robbie. Mr. Jantridano?
So you, you answered my question by answering Pat's question, but how many more years do we have left of higher interest rates moving forward that we might look to do? So it sounds like it's every ten years, you have to wait ten years to refinance in order, in order to do that. So that was, we're doing two thousand fifteen, up to what year do you see us refinancing these bonds moving forward?
Yeah, so we've already, I mean, even now, the, the existing coupons on those refunding debt is only three point three. So because we're not doing twenty years, we think we might be able to do it somewhere between two point seven five and three percent. So the closer it is to two point seven five, the more likely we are to pull the trigger and do the refund. The more likely, you know, because it's not a one for one ratio, like you still, because you're still going to have closing costs and all of those types of things. And so that, that debt runs through, the two thousand fifteen debt, you know, runs through twenty, 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 twenty thirty four, twenty thirty five. But again, even that's not high rates. It's not like we've got ten percent or even five percent debt still in the books. So we really have a very low interest portfolio all around. The, the low hanging fruit has long since been, been captured, and hopefully, we don't find ourselves back in a situation that we end up with higher rates. If you think back to the past couple of years when we had new sales, last year was twenty years at three point five was the rate. I think the year before we were three point two five, the year before that was three point five. Now, I don't think we're, we had one year during COVID where we did it for one percent. That, those days will probably never happen again. But at the same token, some other counties were getting, you know, four, four and a half, four and a quarter, so we were fortunate we didn't pay, pay that rate. So I, I don't know how many more opportunities there will be for, for refunding, but, you know, when the opportunity arises, we'll be prepared.
When will you have an idea if it's going to be feasible or not? Is that like a week before, month before?
Yeah, generally, we can pull it, pull, I mean, we would generally probably start, start making the call because we're seeing bond sales from other counties, you know, similar issuances, similar debt profiles. You know, but if, if we can see that the market is saying, look, yeah, these twenty year, I'm sorry, these refunding bills are going to go for, you know, three percent, we're probably going to say, ah, probably, probably not going to do it. But if it looks like the market a week or so out is, is more aligned to that two point seven five, then we'll probably go forward with it.
Anything to do with the overall interest rates dropping in the market, does that has no effect on?
I mean, it certainly has somewhat of an impact, but this is also longer term debt. So it's, you know, there's, there's a lot of factors at play. Again, we are dealing with tax exempt, which changes some of the dynamics, you know, makes it largely a domestic market as opposed to an international market. But, you know, our debt is a good solid bet, you know, if, and, and that's why, you know, we typically are getting, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen bidders a go around because, you know, people want Hartford County debt.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
Hello, thank you for being here tonight. I just wanted to ask about, I know, from your perspective as Treasurer, you would prefer to have no debt. Like, that would be the ideal setup, but how do we compare to other local jurisdictions at how aggressive we are with, you know, using bonds to pay for capital projects? Like, how leveraged are we compared to other areas? Are we more on the conservative side or more on the aggressive side or?
So there is a, there is a scorecard now that all of the rating agencies are providing that kind of show how we rank up against other, other triple As, and Hartford County does generally do, do better on, on most metrics than a lot of the other triple As. We don't have as, maybe as strong as the economy as, say, like a Howard County, but we might have, you know, better reserves or, you know, a better debt profile. I mean, I'm relatively comfortable with, with where our, our debt numbers are, and realistically, they're, they're going to be going up. The past several years, we've been selling more like fifty million dollars worth of debt. You'll notice this is one hundred and ten, and what's really driving that? It's the fact that the projects now cost two and three times more than they used to. The, the new Hartford Academy is probably going to be a one hundred and fifty, one hundred and seventy five million dollar project. It wasn't that long ago, we were building elementary schools for twenty five million, you know, and now we're building them for one hundred and fifty million. I know that's not a typical school, but even Homestead Wakefield was an eighty million dollar school. So we are going to probably have higher debt just because the, the projects cost, you know, cost more. And as we've talked about, particularly with the schools, the schools have a lot of, of, of capital needs. You have aging facilities, you've got to keep on top of the roof, the roofs and the HVACs, but we also have, you know, schools that need to be modernized, and there's, there's just, you know, there's not enough state dollars to kind of come around, so the locals really have to kind of pick up, pick up the difference. So I do think our debt will, will go up. I think we did a good job of kind of holding, you know, holding debt as, at a lower level as much as we could, but now I think the price pressures are too high that if we, if we tried, if we tried to go back to saying only fifty million dollars worth of debt, you know, we would, you know, not really be able to tackle all of these infrastructure needs. So it's a balancing act. I think we're in good shape. A lot of other counties have a lot less leverage, you know, some of the larger, more metropolitan counties. Now, they also have a lot of their other own challenges, but they're up against debt affordability guidelines, you know, and the rating agencies are looking at them, and they're saying like, oh, you, you, you know, your, your rating might be in jeopardy because you're taking on a lot of debt or because your economy's not growing. So we're in much better shape than, than a lot, but, you know, I'm not going to lie and say it's certainly a very expensive. Some of these projects are getting very, very expensive, and they're only going to get more so.
And that was the other thing I wanted to get your thoughts on just while you're sitting here, because, you know, there's the interest we pay on bonds, but then there's also like an invisible interest in inflation where when we don't replace an HVAC system this year, it's going to cost more in ten years. So why not try, while prices are where they're at, be more aggressive? You know, thinking about in two thousand twenty one when interest rates were basically, it was like a car dealership, you know, zero percent interest for twenty years. Why not be more aggressive in those times to, in the long run, save money both on inflation and when there's lower interest rates?
And I, I think that it is a, it is a balancing, but, you know, today's bonds are tomorrow's debt service, so then when we're back and looking at the operating budget, if you look at like the federal government, you know, right now, I mean, they're getting to the point where the interest on the debt is going to be, you know, the biggest item in the budget, and it crowds out other spending. So, you know, we have both challenges from infrastructure, but we also have challenges on the operating side, you know, whether that's, you know, paying teachers or paying public safety, paying county employees, or doing all the things that we need to do on an operating budget. And that's the challenge with local government. Like, when we take out debt, you know, we're really only doing it for long-term assets. We're not putting the grocery bills on the credit card, we're not putting people's salaries on their credit card, so that when we do say to a future taxpayer, you know, who's, who's going to be paying this off in two thousand thirty four and in two thousand forty four, you know, we're building the school that your kids are still going to be able to go to, you know, taxpayer who might now be ten years old. And, and so, and I think that's the right way to do it, is that we link it to these long-term assets. But again, you know, I think our, our debt profile will probably be increasing just because of the, the needs over the next several years.
Thank you.
So Robbie, you mentioned Hartford Academy, and I know you mentioned one hundred and seventy, one hundred and eighty million. Do you have any idea what our liability will be in that?
So, I mean, I think that the state will probably be coming forward with about fifty million, and that means that the county will have a hundred to one hundred and twenty five million. And you think about, you know, as a general rule, you know, when, you know, every, it's about ten percent of whatever like the bond issuance is becomes like your debt service. So if we have a hundred million dollars, you know, that could be ten percent, ten percent of that, it would mean, you know, debt service of maybe ten million dollars. You know, right now, our school debt service is thirty five, forty million dollars. So that is one of the reasons why we did raise, say, the impact fees, because we know we're going to have these higher costs associated with, you know, these capacity related projects, but even beyond the capacity related projects, we know we're going to have higher costs, and that certainly will, will crowd things out. For anyone who is going to Winter Mako, I will be speaking on school construction, taking on all of these topics, so I'll see you all there on Thursday.
I'll get my popcorn.
I will save, I will save a front row seat.
And I hope our, the state meets its commitment.
Yeah, well, I mean, the issue, and, and again, not to spoil the, the presentation, is, you know, this, this, the state has about three hundred million dollars in their IAC project, and they have about another hundred million dollars in, you know, dealing with lifecycle costs, HVACs and the like. But when a school costs a hundred and fifty million and the state's coming in with four hundred million, you've got twenty four jurisdictions, doesn't, it doesn't go far, you know, it just, it just doesn't go far.
Well, thank you for your presentation, both of you, I appreciate it very much. Mr. Jantridano, please read Bill twenty five zero eighteen into the record for introduction.
Bill twenty five dash year eighteen supplemental. Bill twenty five dash year eighteen supplemental appropriation Hartford Citizen Center and Citizens Care, introduced by Council President Vincenti.
That's not Citizens Care. Oh, it is both, okay, okay. Doesn't say that.
Introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the County Executive. An act to make, an act to make a supplemental appropriation of funds to the General Capital Fund from the General Fund for fiscal year two thousand twenty six to cover expenses incurred for the replacement of elevators at the Citizens Care Center and the Hartford Center. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, January sixth, two thousand twenty six, at seven fifteen P. M. in these council chambers.
Thank you. Senate number ten, introduction and consideration of amendments. We have none. Eleven, calls for final reading bills, we have none. Twelve, enrolling of bills, we have none. Thirteen, unfinished business, we have none. Fourteen, new business, County Auditor, Ms. Brooks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so the last time I presented an auditor update to you all, it was back in June, so got a lot to go through, but I'll try to get through it quickly, and you all can jump in if you have any questions. So, starting with our audits that were in the two thousand twenty five audit plan, there were a handful that weren't finished the last time I presented to you, so I'll just go through those. First, our audit of contract management. We look to see that after a contract has been procured, that whoever's responsible for managing that contract, making sure that they're communicating with the vendor, checking invoices to make sure that they are correct and agree with contract terms, that we're not spending more than the contracts allow, those sorts of things. We tested all of those for a sample of contracts that were in place. There was one recommendation resulting from that audit. We found generally that contract managers were reviewing invoices, they weren't overpaying things that shouldn't be paid, but there was one contract that was overspent by about fourteen thousand dollars. That's on a two point one million dollar contract, so it wasn't a huge overspending. And it was for, if I recall correctly, meal service at the detention centers, something that can be variable. Management is working on figuring out a fix to make sure that that doesn't happen for contracts like that. doesn't happen for contracts like that in the future, but they're working on addressing that. We also completed an audit related to Employee Benefits Administration. I believe we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, but employees register for their benefits during open enrollment and as new employees are hired. We wanted to make sure that the benefits that employees chose were the correct plans that they were actually enrolled in. We wanted to make sure that the amounts that were being deducted from their paychecks were the correct amounts. So in our testing, we found that those things generally were happening, except that for crossing guards, the rates that were in the system had been entered incorrectly. And so there were nine crossing guards who were paying too much in benefit deductions. That was corrected by management, and those employees got refunds for their balances. So that issue has been closed. We looked at the inmate account controls at the detention center. We wanted to confirm that when someone's brought into the detention center, that somebody's paying attention to what cash they have on hand and collecting that and securing it, that when people are getting deposits from friends and family outside of the center, that it goes into their accounts. And likewise, when there are withdrawals from those accounts, that they are being attributed to the correct accounts and that there aren't charges that are unexpected on those accounts. So there were no issues with any of that process, but we did find that the timeliness of reconciliation, so the, how frequently the detention center was making deposits into their bank and also sending revenue to the county to be recorded, that that wasn't happening as frequently as it should. The reason was just that there was only one person assigned to do these accounting functions. So if she was on vacation, then, you know, things got postponed till the next week or two. The detention center has chosen somebody to be a backup to that accountant, so that issue has been addressed. When I talked to you all last, we had completed one of our hotel tax audits, but we did four more in the interim. They were all complete. There were three recommendations related to those four hotels. There was a total of about, a little bit less than $16,000, we found, that needed to be repaid to the county, and those hotel operators have repaid the balances that we found in those projects. We completed an audit of purchase card controls. This is a project that we do every year, but throughout the year. So we didn't have any issues related to that project. We found that cardholders were submitting their receipts. Their supervisors were reviewing and approving those transactions, and that the transactions were being attributed to the correct accounts. The county got a new purchase card system in the summer, no, I'm sorry, in the winter last year. And we did find that because of that new system, the process for reviewing transactions happens much quicker. The reconciliation of purchase cards can happen quicker, and also our audit got wrapped up a bit quicker on that. So there were no issues there to report. And then finally, for fiscal year 2025, we did an exit audit related to the Director of Planning and Zoning, who left in June, and we found no indebtedness related to him. Those exit audits are comprised of us looking to see that financial access has been revoked, logical access has been revoked, if there were assets assigned to the employee that they were returned to the county. We looked to see that the employee is making the correct pay, as has been approved in the budget or in other HR documents, and that their leave payout is correct. And so there were no issues there. So if there are no questions, I'll jump into the fiscal 26 plan. I'll just go through the things that have changed. Starting with the status of prior audit findings, every year we go through and look at the audit findings that we'd had in prior audits to see whether or not management has addressed the issues that we brought up. There were, at the end of that project this year, there were 15 recommendations that we closed and seven that remain open. So we'll circle back and follow up on them again next year. Of those ones that are still open, most of them, either their expiration, not their expiration, their expected completion dates had not yet passed, or if they had passed, they were things that we discussed with management. They are taking steps to correct them, and so they're not matters that really require any escalation at this point. The government auditing standards require that our office be evaluated by a peer review team every three years to ensure that we have an adequate audit process. This answers the question of who audits the auditors, to make sure we have decent internal control so that you all know that you can rely upon the reports that we're issuing to you all. That project was completed in September, and we got a pass rating. That's the highest possible rating for a peer review, so I'm glad about that.
And you participate in other peer reviews in other jurisdictions, right?
Right. We pay for our peer review by providing peer review services to other local government audit offices. It's a good opportunity, one, for us to interact with other auditors to see, you know, what are they doing in their offices, but also for them to give us feedback on, you know, what they've been doing, what they see that we can improve upon, and just to generally dialogue with people who are in comparable positions around the country. So it's a good experience every time. We have started an audit of water and sewer benefit assessments. That project is in progress, and I expect to be able to report to you all on that, if not late this month and early in January. We've had this audit of payroll controls that we've pushed back a few times. It's in planning now. My hope is to report to you all in February or March on that project.
This involves the school system as well?
Nope, just the county.
Just the county, okay.
Yeah, and just the controls related to the county's new payroll system, which was implemented in June of this year.
Okay.
This year, we also looked at grant and aid, award and monitoring controls. Those are the grants that are provided by community services. We wanted to make sure that when the county's giving a grant to an organization that, well, one, that they've submitted an application that describes what they're going to do with the money, and then also that management is, the county's management, is getting updated information from those organizations, showing how they spent the money and what the operational objectives were and have they been met. So we found that those things were happening. We did include one recommendation in the audit report, and it was because some of the applications from a prior year were not available for us to review the documentation that would confirm that somebody was reviewing the grant applications. This was a systems problem. And so management's trying to figure out how to get those files back with the vendor. They may not be able to. But it's an issue that we are going to close because management has changed the process for how they're reviewing applications in the first place. So the county's financial statement audit has been completed for this year. You all will get an update from the county's external auditors next week, but the county had an unmodified opinion on its financial statements. That means the financial statements, that they are generally correct, that there are no misstatements that are included in the financial statements. But you all will get a full report on that next week. Related to that, we look to see that the county's affiliated agencies, so the volunteer fire companies, the Humane Society, the ARC, that those organizations get financial statement audits done every year. And so I will report to you all later this month, confirming that those things are done. And also, the county's single audit is in progress, and so you'll get a report on that probably by the end of this month, too. That's the audit that confirms that the federal grants that the county receives are used correctly in accordance with federal policies. We finished an audit related to investment controls. This project reviews whether the county's investments, so at any given time, the county's got a fair amount of money. It needs to be invested so that it's not just sitting around not earning interest. But there are also procedures that are in place so that there are limits on what the county can invest in. It's important that when there's interest being received, that it's going to the correct account, that it's attributed to the correct funds that the county has. So we look to see that all those controls work the way they were expected to, and they were. We had no recommendations to include in that audit report. We also did an exit audit related to the Director of Procurement, who left her position a few months ago. Again, with her audit, we found that there was no indebtedness owed to the county. We are currently working or planning, excuse me, we've just started an audit of environmental services billing and collection controls. We'll be looking to see that the, basically all things that happen at the landfill financially are going the way they're supposed to. We contract with Maryland Environmental Services to have them manage the landfill, so we'll confirm that, one, the amount we pay them to do that is correct, and also that the revenue that's being collected is correct and supportive. And the last thing that we already have in progress is purchase card controls, which I described a little bit already for the prior year. So that project is in progress, and we don't expect to report on that until next summer. So that was a lot of information, but we're always doing stuff in our office. There's always a lot going on. The only other thing I'll add is that the Audit Advisory Board meeting has its next public meeting on February 24 at 4:30 in the council's large conference room. So invite your friends. With that, that's all I've got. I can answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Crystal, for your presentation and for your update and for the service that you and your team provide, not only us, the county government, but our citizens, the service you provide us each and every day. We appreciate it very much. Appreciate you being able to, you know, answer any questions that we may have anytime. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Thank you again for all that you do, for everything on this list and beyond, because I know when we have questions and we come to you, you jump on that. And when we have a bill, you always have a detailed write-up on it. So I appreciate all that you do. I had a quick question about the Employee Benefits Administration audit. Was part of that audit looking at, you know, if employees are choosing the plan that matches their needs? Like, for, this is, at my day job, one of the conversations that has been had is that employees, on gut instinct, choose whatever plan costs the most money because they think, oh, that must be the plan I need. But that also in turn costs us as an organization the most money to cover the remaining balance. And oftentimes, they're paying for benefits that go unused. Like, so is that something that you all looked at to make sure we're not overinsuring our employees, or that they're paying for things that they don't need, like, you know, out-of-network coverage, but every, they never use, or?
That's not something this audit covered. Human Resources does work with a broker to help ensure the plans that we're choosing make sense. So like, for example, if you are Medicare eligible, you might have to be in a particular plan that accommodates that. But no, that's something Human Resources manages with their broker before they buy policies.
Mr. Jan Gredan?
I might be able to help Councilman Bennett on some of his questions with the, they do have a seminar, and they have specific representatives from each one of those companies that'll come in and explain the benefits. They're explaining them to you. They'll give you options, but invariably, it's up to you to pick the options. Sometimes, it sounds good. You might never use it. And unfortunately, that's what insurance is, is it gives you something to look at, and you think that might be the best thing. It might cost you more money, not the county, because you're paying for some of those benefits. But, you know, I've sat with Crystal on these audit meetings, which she's extremely thorough, but I think you were looking at, hey, is somebody selling us, or the employee something that they don't need, or is too much money? And sometimes that does happen. That's why each year you need to go back and review your benefits and look at that and say, hey, I really didn't use that. Is this worth me doing it again?
I'll also add that the county is self-insured for health insurance purposes. And so if an employee goes to the doctor, then, you know, the claim goes to CareFirst, and CareFirst pays it. We pay that amount. If somebody doesn't go to the doctor, we don't pay any amount. So the risk of overspending is a little bit less, but it, there's, I guess, a little bit more art in terms of how the plans are designed to sort of determine the cost sharing between the employee and the county.
And what I was talking about-
But we're paying for what people use.
Was mostly the supplemental plans that they have. And I didn't know if that's what Jacob meant, but there's supplemental plans, you know, from like MetLife or somebody else that they come in and do that.
And employees pay, to my recollection, employees pay for all those supplemental things.
Yes.
But the ones that are the basic health dental, you know, vision, those are the ones that have a cost share with the county.
Anyone else? Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 17 comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
Do, Mr. President, we have one. John Malamo.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. I'm the only one speaking?
Apparently so.
Do I get extra minutes?
No, sir. I'm thinking about taking time away.
I thought this was the Christmas season. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. I would offer these observations on Hartford County Council activities. Bill 2512, Chapter 38, Personnel, Article 1, Labor Relations. At Code 386, Rights and Duties of Certified Employee Organizations. B, in part, the Memorandum of Agreement shall provide that a grievance as to interpretation, implementation, enforcement, or application of the terms of the Memorandum of Agreement shall be subject to binding arbitration. At Code 389, we see that disputes concerning the interpretation or application of this article shall be submitted in writing directly to the personnel officer and may be submitted to the Personal Advisory Board for further consideration upon written request to the personnel officer. The Personal Advisory Board's decision shall be final and binding on all parties. This is unchanged. At Code 3844, Appeals, there is a defined procedure for resolving different grievances. The process ends with the Personnel Advisory Board decision, which is final on all parties. This is unchanged. By law, this is the process for resolving disputes and grievances. At Code 111, Definitions and Rules of Construction, person are defined person in part, any individual, natural person, voluntary association, organization, society, any other group acting as a unit, officer or employee of any of them, or other representative appointed according to law. Certified employee organizations are persons, but not employees. At Charter, Section 601, it is the county council that establishes by law the Personnel Administration System. At 604, Personnel Law of the County Charter, subsection, par 10, the law established by the county council shall include grievance procedures. By law, all employees must follow dispute, grievance, and appeal processes at 389 and 3844. A grievance may be initiated by a county employee. The employee or organization may represent that employee in the grievance process, but cannot initiate a grievance. There are no procedures for binding arbitration presented in Bill 2512. At Code 1-2, Authority and Effective Code, B, Effective Code, par 12, Conflicting Provisions, par 1, A, if the provisions of different chapters, articles, or sections of this code conflict with or contravene each other, the provisions of each chapter, article, or section shall prevail as to all matters and questions growing out of the subject matter of that chapter, article, or section. I believe, ladies and gentlemen, that as a minimum, you have established conflicting laws. Bill 2512 is then nullified. Simply adding the term binding arbitration is not sufficient to serve the purposes intended. I would refer you to Raglani versus Ripken Professional Baseball for further edification. Good night.
Thank you, sir.
There are more speakers, Mr. President.
We'll move on to 16, business from council members. Mr. Jan Gredan.
Oh, first. Like that. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Council President. I think myself and Council President Vincenti and Councilman Riley were at the Farm Bureau banquet November 21 at Palmview Farms. So the food was great, and the gentleman that got Farm of the Year very well deserved. I do not remember his name, so I'm sure Pat does. But I was in Edgewood, dishing out some Thanksgiving meals along with Councilwoman Robert, and, oh, I guess April left. So, but it was a pretty well-attended event. I think they probably had about 100 people that showed up.
That's what I heard last night.
Yeah. So, was at the CAD meeting last week, and then C. Milton Wright lost to the Huntington Town Hurricanes, 45 to 14. C. Milton Wright's record is 7-5. Huntington is ranked 13, while C. Milton ranked was 85. So they did well. They scored twice during the game. And Haverdegrace beat Patterson Mill 31-29 in the regional second round. And then unfortunately, Perryville beat Haverdegrace in the playoffs, 37-7. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Gredan. And Ms. Sodles?
Thank you, Council President. There are lots of exciting things happening this week in Aberdeen. Tomorrow at 4:00 PM in Aberdeen, they're going to be celebrating two revitalization projects, the Watchtower Brewing and Cypress Alley Project. Starting Friday is the Aberdeen Festival of Trees from 4:00 to 8:00. Starting Friday is the Aberdeen Festival of Trees from 4:00 to 8:00, and it's again on Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00. And Saturday is the 48th Annual Christmas Parade from 3:00 to 4:30. Lastly, I've received some inquiries about the change in the freezing weather plan, which supports our homeless population here in Harford County. Council President, I see Mr. Overbay is in the audience this evening. I'd like to request that at the next council meeting, someone from the administration, specifically Community Services, provide us with some details on the new plan. Would that be okay?
Fine with me, Mr. Overbay. You can look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Hello, good evening. Good to be with everybody. I attended the Haverty Grace Oyster Feast, which is a wonderful event that helps fundraise for local organizations, as well as volunteered at the Haverty Grace Community Projects Annual Thanksgiving Dinner. This year, over 1,300 meals were provided out to the community. I know Council President was busy in the kitchen cooking turkeys. I was not as inclined to cook, so I was folding the brochures that went into all the meals. And that's one of my favorite mornings of the whole year, seeing dozens, if not hundreds, of people flow through those doors to volunteer and make sure everybody has a meal. In my day job, I've been in a unit teaching my students what the word "community" means, and one of the basic definitions I share with them is that community is a group of people coming together. And I think what a better example, I don't know if a better example exists of community than on Thanksgiving morning, everybody coming together to make sure everyone has a meal, and someone to stop by and say hello on Thanksgiving Day. Holly Jolly First Friday is coming up this Friday, including the parade and tree lighting. It'll be at 6:00 PM in downtown Haverty Grace, and then I'll also be at the Aberdeen Parade on Saturday. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Robert?
Yes, good evening. So I have attended the Crossroads Community Remodel Open House through Arrow, which Councilwoman Imhoff was also with me as we presented a proclamation. It was a beautiful place for our teenage youth and girls who live there, as they have no other place to live, and it was set up really nicely, nice little apartment cottages. I also have, I'm on the Maryland Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees, it's a very long title, and we reviewed 71 applications, only one from Harford County. And I want to make sure that a lot of our nonprofits know that there is money out there to be able to do a lot of housing initiatives, especially when it comes to homelessness. And so we are in the process about to award 45 of them this week. So that was good to kind of read through a lot of those organizations things. And then myself and Councilwoman Imhoff were at the IWEU Symposium at the Y through the Health Department. We were both panelists. The girls were having a great time. It was about 150 middle and high school girls put that in the room, and there's a lot of screeching, that's what we said at one point, but it was good. The girls loved it. They got lots of donated beauty supply items, raffles, and so it was a good time. I attended the Trauma Reboot and Reboot Advanced Graduation, and that is interesting. One of the 14 graduates, and all of them have been through a 12-week intensive mental health boot camp to ensure that, you know, they can live successful, healthy lives mentally. The story that the one speaker said, from trauma from the age of nine to pretty much 30, was, I find that she was resilient. It was definitely an emotional evening. They do one for law enforcement and first responders. That one will be initiated in January 2026, and once I get that information, I'll let that be known, but they also do one for veterans as well, and military. And then I served Thanksgiving dinner at the American Legion. They had about 100 come through, and a lot of people were so comfortable, they really kind of just sat around, is what I understood, even after I had left. And then we had the cab meeting for Edgewood-Jappa-Jappa Town last night, always informative. And then today, I went to the LHIC Local Health Improvement Coalition meeting at Towson, where we learned about all of the good things that are happening through our Health Department, and then looking at statistically what we look like for suicide, what we look like for drugs, what we look like for mental health, lung cancer, you name it, and it was very informative. I did have discussions with the Health Officer earlier last week about community, more community resources, such as mobile health services, and so we have been in the constant discussions, and there looks like there's going to be some movement to that, having a mobile bus going through, health bus being able to have access to our communities. So that is still in the conversations as well. And then Edgewood is going to have its first Christmas tree lighting in 10 years, and so we are all excited. We get our tree tomorrow being delivered, and it'll be at, on December 13th, but we're excited that we, as a community, came together and were able to do this for our community. And that is it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Robert. Ms. Imhoff?
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm like way out of line. I hope the kids enjoyed their first holiday, snow day, rain day today. I know my girls enjoyed it. They had a lot of questions, though. On November 19th, I had the privilege of celebrating the remodel of the Aerotrot and Family Services Crossroads Community. As Councilwoman Robert explained, this is a transitional housing opportunity for teenage girls who find themselves in foster care, and this is a great opportunity where they can actually have their whole person supported. So they very much work on like a holistic approach of breaking abuse cycles, mental health cycles, substance abuse cycles, all of the things that led to them coming into care and then launching them into independence. So it was a great opportunity to be able to see firsthand the time, the money, the dedication that has been put into making them have a nice transitional housing opportunity. On November 21st, I served as the panelist for the IWE Matters Symposium. It was great and loud. The girls had such a good time. There were so many girls that we felt that they were like lifelong best friends. Turns out, they had just met that day. But it was a really great opportunity for a lot of these young women to come together, to have fun, to meet new friends. They did vision boards, they did dance parties. We tried to keep their attention with the panel as long as we could, but by that point, there was better things to be done. But it was a really good time. So a special shout-out to the Health Department for putting that on. They did a really great job. And then on December 1st, I attended the Edgewood-Jappa-Jappa Town Community Advisory Board meeting, where we had Hartford Transit come out, which was, a lot has changed with them over the years, so it was really nice to kind of learn about their new bus routes, the apps, the timing expectations, and there were a lot of people in the room who apparently had never used Hartford Transit. So it's a great resource that we have here in the community, and I would love to be able to see us kind of amplify that a little bit more. On November 20th, the Fallston Volunteer Fire Company proudly kicked off the Harford County Modular Railroad Second Annual Train Garden. This is an event presented by graduates of Harford Community College who are in their model train classes. The Train Garden is located at Fallston Volunteer Fire Company, Fallston Fire and Ambulance Company's crossroad station at 3108 Fallston Road in Fallston. So just a shout-out for them. Admission is free, and they are also, this coming Saturday, doing a Christmas toy drive from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This week, Thursday through Sunday, the Shriners Boomi Temple is having their Festival of Trees. There's a lot of local shriners and Freemasons that helped put this together. For those of you who don't know, the shriners do a lot of really tremendous work, including their children's hospitals, so we always like to go and support them. It's also a really cool event. And then just a reminder, Giving Tuesday is not over yet, so I encourage everybody to find their favorite charity of choice, and please make sure that they have a great holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Imhoff. We'll go to fifteen, business from the president. Tomorrow, our next Adequate Public Facilities Advisory Board meeting will be taking place upstairs at 6:00 PM, second floor, council multipurpose room. When we look at events, we were honored and pleased to host the Harford County delegation. Our senators and delegates were here. We sat before them and presented our priorities for road improvements and things of that nature, education and different things. As Council President, my staff and I attend every cab meeting in the county, and the ladies in the office do a much better job than I do, but I try to get around to different cab meetings every so often. So this past month, I was up at Jarrettsville at their cab meeting. I attended the annual Thanksgiving dinner in memory of Margaret Worthington at the Level Fire Hall. Former county executive Glassman puts on every year. Outstanding job, the room was full, great event. Attended two, or actually, we presented proclamations, and I attended one of the retirements, Ms. Price, Susan Price at Facilities. Want to thank her for her 26 years of service to the citizens, and also Rob Holloway yesterday at DES for his 25 years of service to the county. We attended, Ms. Berry attended the Char Hope Dinner for me, and we also attended the Harford County Farm Bureau Dinner, and that was Herbie Harkins. That was the Farmer of the Year. Outstanding family, very well deserved. Also, the Thanksgiving dinner that the Community Projects of Haverty Grace puts on, they do an outstanding job, and when you say "community projects," it definitely is a community project because so many of the community members show up the week prior, too, and some of them actually work on this dinner all year long. They've probably already started next Thanksgiving's dinner's planning today, knowing them, but I want to give a shout-out to Rodney Swam, Luann Swam, his daughter Katie Arnold, her husband, Dward from Water Street Seafood, Chris Scarlato, Willie Norrie from Coakley's, Garrett Pencil, Cassie Boyer, just to name a few of the people that worked to put that dinner on. We cooked over, Dave Lynch also, cooked over 100 turkeys, maybe 110 turkeys, served 1,300 meals. Dward was very proud of the fact that he made 50 gallons of gravy. Just to give you an idea, 50 gallons of gravy. Last year, I think he said he did 70. He got a little carried away. But I started my morning actually at 4:30 in the morning at the Detention Center for the first Thanksgiving dinner with the corrections deputies there, and great bunch of guys. I think there's 15 on that shift, and they just rotated in for their first meal at 4:30 in the morning. But sadly, this past week or so, we've lost a lot of people here, specifically in the Haverty Grace area and the Level area. Mike Knight, member of the Knight family, Ralph Knight's family, next to the Level Fire Hall, he passed away. Condolences to Pat Wallston, she passed away this week. Catherine Hill, Cecil Hill's wife, passed away at the age of, I think she's 88 tomorrow. And then, of course, the devastation with the shooting, you know, with the two National Guard members and losing Ms. Beckstrom is just terrible. And then sadly, my cousin Linda Packard lost her battle with cancer. I think she fought it for three years. She passed away. She's going to be survived by her son, I mean, her husband, Charlie, and her son Chad. And then, of course, condolences to the Packard family, the Gelati family, the Vinceni family, just on and on and on. So we just ask you to keep all the friends and families and their thoughts and prayers. And with that, I think we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.